Gernat?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Jerem?
Here.
Stothard?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Festerson?
Here.
Mr. President?
Here. Please rise for our pledgable agents and remain standing for invocation by Council Member Jerem.
Pledgeable agents to the line of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know it's sad that we keep coming before the body and the public to have these invocations where we remember those who have fallen as a result of gun violence. And yet, here we are again today, and the people of Newtown, Connecticut, the families there that are affected by the tragedy, it's me close, and then I have a brother who's a teacher just not too far north of that school, and a family that also lives in Connecticut. So, today, just ask that we remember the 20 children and seven teachers and administrators who died trying to save those 20 children in a moment of silence in a minute here. But I'd ask the Council President on behalf of the council to have a resolution expressing Omaha's sympathy and support and understanding as having gone through something similar just a few years ago for next week's agenda. So if we could take a moment now to reflect upon the 20 children, the families, the teachers and administrators, and the first responders and their families who are all in a deep sense of grief and shock.
Thank you. Amen.
City Clerk, Certified Publication Daily Record, on December 14th, notes for Reboot Council and Regular City Council Meeting, December 18th, 2012. The Current Copy of the Meetings Act is posted in white binder on these four legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it is not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device. Mr. Clerk?
Zoning ordinance and final reading and planning board attachments will take items five, six, and seven as one case. Five is ordinance to rezone property located east of 99th Street and south of Reddick Avenue from LI to R7 Medium Density Multifamily Residential District. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Six is ordinance to approve a planned unit development overlay district to approve the development plan. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And seven is ordinance to approve a development agreement for the property, providing for public improvements for which the developer is responsible, and we have a request from the developer to lay this over three weeks and continue the public hearing.
One more second.
Roll call. Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's laid over three weeks.
Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, no meeting being held December 25th and January 1st, 2013 Agenda Item Number H should be laid over three weeks to January 8th for publication of public hearing. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, Agenda Item Number Nine should be laid over three weeks to January 8th, 2013. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, Agenda Item Number 10 should be laid over three weeks to January 8th for publication of public hearing. Liquor, Item Number 11, O'Levers, 1322 South Saddle Creek Road, Class C liquor license, new application, old location.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 11 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Sean Kelly, 7134 Pacific Street, appearing today on behalf of the applicant. As you may have noted on the application, there is some criminal history with alcohol offenses on the application. I will say that Chris McMillan behind me, who's the liquor manager, does have two DUIs on his criminal record. He has successfully completed those sentences, and in his professional life, he has acted as an employee of O'Levers for the past nine years, and they have an impeccable record with the Liquor Control Commission with no violations. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Stothard?
Thank you, Chris. I'm just going to have to ask you some questions. So could you state your name and address for the record?
Chris McMillan, 1415 South 60th Street.
Thank you very much. And as Mr. Kelly just said, he acknowledged your history there with a couple DUIs, but I just want to ask you, as liquor manager, you're responsible to make sure all the rules and regulations are followed?
Yes.
And this indicates that you didn't follow the law yourself, so can you, how can you guarantee the council that you will be a responsible manager?
Well, yeah, with the unfortunate occurrence of the alcohol infractions in my personal life, I will say that it's never carried over into the business life. I've always kept, you know, strict rules about drinking at work and also enforcing the age requirements as well.
All right. Have you ever, have you ever taken any of the certified liquor management classes with the state?
I have, yes.
Okay. And how long have you had experience being a manager?
I did it between, let's see, '04 and '09 at O'Levers.
Okay, all right. Well, we want you to take this seriously.
I will.
All right, thank you.
Chris, although you state that the violations don't bleed over into your professional life, is that, is that what you stated?
I did, yes.
Yes, but it's important to remember that your, this criminal history does, and so that's, that's the point that we're trying to make here. So, we do take these very serious, and we want you to understand that.
As will I.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. President, Sean Kelly, 7134 Pacific. Chris did undergo, in a professional licensed evaluation, indicating no, no dependence or abuse of alcohol in his life, so, and I have that. I'd be happy to share with the clerk if you guys desire.
Thank you. Roll call.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Pass.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
And Jerem passes the second time for potential conflict interest. It's adopted 6-0-1 passing. Item Number 12, Baxter's, 6113 Maple Street, Class C liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 12 begins now. Are there any proponents?
This is Brad Marr, 5831 Burdette Street, Omaha, Nebraska, owner-operator of Baxter's.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson?
Thanks, Mr. President. Just a note of the application here, this is another great new business in Benson and a great new renovation of a business front there. Brad is also the owner of Lot Two, which you all may be aware of, is one of the hottest restaurants in town right now, and they've done a great job with that operation, and they'll do a great job with this operation. Had a chance to pop in there last week, right when they were opening, and a crew from Channel 7 was just walking out and gave it a great review. So I encourage everybody to check it out, and I look forward to doing that, too, and I'll move approval.
Roll call.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted 7 to 0. Item Number 13, Uncorked Paint and Sip Studio, 12100 West Center Road, Suite 706, Class I liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 13 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Jamie Vermeer, owner and operator, Uncorked Paint and Sip.
Enter address, please.
12100 West Center Road, Suite 706.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other proponents?
Yeah, I would be a proponent.
Your name?
And your name and address, please.
Laura Vermeer, 9910 Emmeline Street, La Vista.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted 7 to 0.
Thank you.
Item Number 14, The Corky Canvas, 3157 Farnham Street, Suite 708, Class I liquor license, new application, new location.
Good afternoon, Council.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 14 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Council. This is, I'm Angie Bergren Lewis with The Corky Canvas, 3157 Farnham Street, Suite 708.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem?
Yes, at least by the names of the applicants, you might have some competition out to the west and...
The best form of flattery.
And in between in Exarban Village, I think this is now the third one of these that we've seen, so good luck to you.
Yes, we currently have a location in Lincoln as well.
Roll call.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted 7 to 0.
Item Number 15, The Golden Palace Restaurant, 4040 North 132nd Street, Class I liquor license, new application, old location.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 15 begins now. Are there any proponents? Yes, sir, go ahead. State your name and address.
4040 North 132nd Street.
Enter your name, please.
Ming Zhang.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Roll call. Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted 7 to 0.
Good.
Thank you. Item Number 16, Super Carnicara El Publica, 5116 South 24th Street, package liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 16 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Hugh Abrahamsen, 6901 Dodge Street, representing the petitioner.
My name is Jose Palomares, and my address is 5116 South 24, applying for a package liquor.
Just for informational purposes, my client has a restaurant across the street from this location that he's been in business for approximately nine years. He has a Class C liquor license there. The name of that location is Palitieri Restaurant San Luis. There was one instance in the past where he had a problem with the Liquor Control Commission on the basis that he had someone who was not authorized by the Liquor Control Commission seat someone at the restaurant. That individual was his wife who was here at the time. She was becoming national and naturalized. She is now naturalized. She has a liquor license at the restaurant, and obviously, my client is here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gernat? Jose, you come up to the, just repeat your name for the record.
Jose Palomares.
We typically ask if anybody has anything on their record. You do have, in addition to what your attorney has just stated, a violation, even though that was back in October of '11, we have a standard practice of trying to make sure that if you're going to be a liquor manager and you have to uphold the laws for that particular industry and that particular type of operation, and if you violate the law yourself, what can you tell us that will ensure us to make that you'll have an operation that you'll be cooperating with the police and following the laws of the state?
Yeah, I'm trying to learn a little more about the liquor, what to try to sell and not talk to my employees about. They try to onceell some person and check everything real good.
The one that I was concerned about, you, you had, it was, it was an automobile accident where it was leaving the scene of an accident. I understand, as I'm looking at it now with a better set of eyes, was that case dismissed back in October of 2011?
Yes. Is it for myself?
Was that case dismissed against you? It was a traffic accident?
I don't remember real good on that one, but I think somebody's driving my truck on that day in the parking bed, parking lot, and...
I understand.
Yeah.
You do have a good operation across the street.
Yes, I'm trying.
And checking with the neighbors around you, you seem to be a proprietor that they would like to have and continue to have on South 24th Street. So I would make a recommendation to approve.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted 7 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item Number 17, Old Chicago, 2643 South 144th Street, request permission to appoint Jennifer Toft manager, and the Old Chicago's 1111 Harney Street, requests permission to appoint same manager.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 17 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Jennifer Toft, 2503 North 71st Street, and I currently have the liquor license on 144th and Center, and I'm requesting permission to adopt the one on 11th and Harney as well.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Roll call. Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's laid over three weeks. Consent Agenda, any member of the city council may cause an item placed on a consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by City Council Rules of Order.
The public hearings on Agenda Items Numbers 19 through 29 were held on December 11th, 2012.
Roll call. Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
And now take up Item Number 30, which is an ordinance to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the city and the Professional Firefighters Association of Omaha, Local 385, for a term of December 26, 2010 through December 20, 2014. And we have A and B are documents submitted, A, B, and C are documents submitted.
The public hearing on Agenda Item Number 30 was held on December 11th, 2012. Ms. Stothard?
Thank you, Mr. President, and today we are at the third reading where we can do the approval of the fire contract, and here's where we are right now. The last contract was approved in 2004, and we're still operating under that same contract. That contract allows spiking, it allows retirement age at 45, and it has 0% premium for individual health cares. That contract is the reason, along with the recession, that we now have a $680 million unfunded pension liability. So here's where we are today. After years of litigation and years of gridlock, we finally have an agreement. This has been approved by the fire executive board, it has been approved by the union membership, it has been approved by the personnel board, it has been reviewed by the pension board, and now we are at the approval with the city council. Today, we're either going to approve it or we're going to reject it. We're not going to suggest any amendments at all. What we have achieved with this contract is we achieved an 18-month salary freeze, we stopped the spiking, current active firefighters will pay more for their health care to the tune of about $680,000 a year, the current active firefighters will pay more into their pensions, a cumulative amount of around $800,000 a year, they will work longer also to receive maximum retirement benefits for those with 15 years or less. New firefighters, age of retirement increase from 45 to 55. They will retire at 65% base pay, no spiking. Daily staffing, overall staffing, staffing by rank is still management prerogative. The total pension savings with the increased contributions and the decreased pension benefits over a 50-year period equal about $822 million over where we are now. If we would reject this contract, we are, we'll lose all of the above, and we are back operating under the contract of 2004 again. The pension board, at the pension board last, or a week ago, the city's actuary reported that after approving this contract almost immediately, January 1st, 2013, the unfunded pension liability will drop by approximately $30 million immediately. Right now, we take an average of about $1 million more every month out of the pension than we put in the pension. Once we approve this contract, eventually, that will change. And we also must understand state law when we talk about what we have done with this contract. We must understand the rules of collective bargaining and the CIR. We don't care about what other contracts state across the country, or what Des Moines states, or what's in their contract. We are concerned what is in our contract in Omaha, Nebraska, and although it is a rather lengthy contract of 200-plus pages, a majority of what is in this contract has been put in there by past litigation and by the CIR. So we are bound by the rules within the state. We think that this is absolutely a good first step. We know that there is more that we would like to achieve. This contract will save the taxpayers millions of dollars. It is only through, it's a four-year contract, there is no doubt, but two years of that four-year contract have passed. This contract will conclude at the end of 2014. In fact, we will be back at the negotiating table about this time next year. So I'm gonna, I have some other questions that I would like to ask the city attorney and others in a few moments, but I want to yield the floor now, right now, and let the other council members speak.
Mr. Jerem?
Would the president yield to us some questions?
Yes, Mr. Jerem.
There's been, in the last week or so, some critics of this arrangement who have, among other things, questioned the actuarial assumption of 8% return on investment to achieve the 820-some million in savings that this agreement will achieve to the pension going forward over the fixed term of 50 years. Are you on the pension, firemen's and police pension board?
Yes, I am. I'm the council representative for the police and firemen's pension board, and I've been on the pension board since, since I got on the council in 2010.
What other people serve on that?
There's seven members on the board. We have three representatives from the organizations, two from the police department, one from the fire department, the city finance director, the city human resources director, myself, and in addition, we have one citizen representative on the board.
Does the board meet in public?
Yes, they do. We meet every Thursday at 1:30 in the afternoon in this chamber.
Every?
Every third Thursday of each month.
And as a part of that committee and board's official responsibilities, does the board actually evaluate the performance of the pension's investments?
Yes, we do.
Do you do that alone or with the assistance of experts?
With the assistance of experts.
Are these experts internal to the city or external independent consultants?
External independent consultants.
And how frequently does the board assess how the pension fund is performing?
We assess our financial performance on a monthly basis, and on a quarterly basis, we have representatives of the investment community, our investment counselors, our investment advisors come and address the board.
Has the board, since you've been on it, acceded to or accepted recommendations in terms of what your independent financial investment advisors have recommended in terms of establishing a rate of return for the fund in light of its performance?
Yes, as a matter of fact, it's a, it's an active topic. It is discussed and reviewed repeatedly, particularly during the quarterly reviews. I know myself, I have publicly asked our advisors and stated that we have been questioned and sometimes criticized for the 8% return of investment, and, but, but to ask them if they are still comfortable with the 8% return on investment, with the caveat that this is a long-term investment, it's a 40-to-50-year commitment to the equity fund, the money that we have available, that they are comfortable with the 8% return on investment.
And has the board accepted that 8% and set that as the anticipated rate of return?
Yes, we have.
Will the board continue to monitor that to make sure that if things change, you're in a position to recommend different assumptions?
Yes, but I speak for myself, but yes, certainly.
And in terms of those who have been so publicly critical of this actuarial assumption and the tentative agreement we're about to vote on, has any of the critics appeared at any of these public meetings of the pension board?
To the best of my knowledge, no.
When was the most recent meeting of the board?
Well, we had a special meeting earlier this month.
Did you?
I believe it was December 7th, or it was on a Friday, and then we're scheduled to meet tomorrow afternoon at 1:30.
Okay. And in all those meetings, right up until last week, not once did any one of these critics appear and challenge or question or request that the rate be changed?
No.
Now, I'd ask our council staff, Jim Douding, if you could put on the Elmo a graph. You're gonna have to turn that. There you go. You're gonna need to zoom in and change the light. There you go. Now, in terms of, you might want to raise that up a little bit so I can read what's on the bottom of the sheet first. There's a name of a company there. Who is on the bottom right? Demarche and Associates, Mr. President?
Demarche and Associates are our senior financial advisor. They assess the performance of the group of money managers that we use for the pension fund. We have, there's 15 money managers that we use.
A national firm?
They're out of Kansas City. That is correct.
And are they one of these independent firms?
That is correct.
So this isn't Tom Mulligan and Associates or Pension Board graph we're about to see here, this is our national leading independent financial advising firm.
That is correct.
Okay, would you lower the graph now? If you could zoom in, maybe, Mr. Douding, point with your finger, there are two lines on this chart as you move from the 0% upward following the blue, more prominent bolded line and the dash below that. And the dash, I believe, if you look at the bottom, Mr. President, represents the absolute objective return. Am I reading this correct in that this is the rate of return that your investment advisors in the pension board respectively would measure the fund in terms of your expected rate of return over the life of the agreement?
Yes.
And is the blue bolded line above it, the historical performance of... Am I reading this correct in that this is the rate of return that your investment advisors in the pension board respectively would measure the fund in terms of your expected rate of return over the life of the agreement?
Yes.
And is the blue bolded line above it, the historical performance of the firefighters and police retirement pension fund, actual, how it's done?
Yes, it is.
So it would appear for me that never once has the performance over the life of the fund been below what your investment advisors and the pension board have set as the 0% absolute objective?
Yes. And as you can see by the line, we've had our peaks and valleys, which is basically predicated on the different investment cycles that the country has gone through. But overall, we have met our objectives.
And this is the graph that I would anticipate you and the pension board members, whether they be you and the current members or people who are in the future sitting in their stead, will continue to monitor and update this graph as we go along?
Yes.
Now, should the bottom fall out and the United States enter a complete fiscal disarray and we needed to make adjustments to our fund, whether it be a slight to the disaster I just told you, what would the, what would you as the board or your replacements be doing in terms of letting the council or the public know that changes needed to be made?
Well, the first thing that I would do is listen to our professionals and assess their recommendations. And if I felt, or if the board felt it was appropriate, we would make those changes and advise the council and the public accordingly.
So this isn't a star chamber that meets in private, that's unaccountable to anybody, that doesn't report its findings to anybody and its recommendations. This is a course of a dialogue that the board will continue to have in terms of letting the council and others know what its recommendation is in terms of the fund.
Yes. And we welcome and invite any and all participation from the public.
Thank you. You can take that down. Now, I'd like to take people down a little bit of memory lane here in terms of the assertion that critics make that we should not pass this agreement, we should wait, we should continue to press on for additional reforms, and remind them, as the Chair of our committee, Ms. Stotter, has, that under the parameters of the law as it exists in Nebraska today, there is no court in this state, particularly the Commission on Industrial Relations, that will order either the firefighters or the city to change the amount of pension contributions or percentages of benefits for retirees. The same is true for health care benefits. So those who say, well, there's $680 million unfunded actuarial liability for the pension, but do nothing, hold off, wait for more reform, in my opinion, although you may well be sincere in your criticisms and your requests, there's nothing under the law that we have as a tool to unilaterally implement additional changes without good faith bargaining between the city and the Professional Firefighters Representative Board. And by waiting, we were told in 2011 by our predecessor independent actuarial firm that if there was no agreement in three years, we would have to find an additional $6.7 million every year, year after year, to repair the fund to solvency over a 50-year period. And if the delay exceeded that in approached 10 years, there was a point of no return, meaning the cliff, the falloff on the amount of benefits being paid out versus the amount being paid in would so far exceed the income and return on investment that there was no amount of money under our current mill levy and current revenue sources that could fix and return the fund to solvency because you would be approaching an additional $50 million every year, year after year, for 50 consecutive years. Now, the difference between our mill levy, where it is now on property taxes, and the income from other revenue sources, whether it be the city's share of the sales tax or restaurant tax, and everything else, does not approach and would not approach that kind of money. It would be fiscal insanity to delay this repair and this pension and health care and contractual reforms that have been achieved here, whether it even be another year and a half or further. And it's borderline insanity to risk the cliff. You know, we hear so often when people talk about on the national news, the criticisms that the U.S. citizens and taxpayers have towards their Congress. Sides that are entrenched in positions, the failure of reasonable compromise and reasonable reforms, sides being, each side being able to reach across the aisle in a nonpartisan body like we have with very contentious history of the labor strife we've had, particularly with this union. And we've managed, as we've heard in the public hearing and the comments we heard from the body last week, to achieve that which, when we each were running, that the public has demanded that we achieve. End spiking. Fix the pension. Decrease the percentages that firefighters and police receive in terms of their maximum percentage of retirement and raise the retirement age. And since being elected, when we learned of the health care funding crisis that the city had, additional demands were made by our constituents to address health care reform, both in terms of working with the HR department and Mr. O'Gara and his people collectively with the administration. And thus, we went from 34 plans down to about three today. And we've gone, in this case, of this union, from 0% contributions ordered by the CIR to 4%, and family agreed at 4 to 7. Now, you may call that kicking the can down the road, but in terms of immediate pension savings, in this agreement, as with the last, of $30 million January 1, delineated 800-plus thousand in savings from the economic benefits that we've, and concessions that we've negotiated. And I believe, and I always maintain it's even more. Back when we were looking at the last contract, I had staff look at how much money were we paying out in overtime for having to run four men on a rig. And the callback concession previously negotiated, if you ran half the time, it was calculated at just under a million in savings. So if you run a quarter of the time or less, you're about half a million. And this agreement is additional to what was previously negotiated. Now, I may have misspoke, but we're going from 0 to 7% on individual and family. Currently, 0%. And if we went back to the CIR for individuals, it would be 0 again, and for family, it would be 4. So we're picking up 7% on the individuals and 3% on the single plus ones in the family. I don't call that insignificant. In terms of the criticism of, this was as recently as last night. I was trying to go to two holiday parties and somehow someone got my mobile phone. They were so passionately opposed to this, they somehow tracked me down. I was trying to learn what the, all the good things that were going on in Gifford Park last year. And this person said, and very sincerely, "There's no money in the budget next year in the Fire Department to pay this, these wage increases and the additional pension contributions." And it was, just couldn't have been any more intense. And I said, "You're absolutely right. It's not in the Fire Department budget. It's in the wage adjustment account." So whoever's telling you the money's not in the Fire Department budget, people, yes, but turn the page and look in the wage adjustment account. That's where the money is. And we've been stoning it away. And our finance directors were very good about recommending budgets that have put the money away. It's in the wage adjustment account. So relax. And that covers not just the salary, but the additional pension contributions. Money's there for both. And it will be. And on that note, there are people who are saying, "This isn't substantially equal. It violates the charter." Because they allege the city is paying in disproportionately more than what the firefighter union members will be paying in. And this came up at the time of the Police Officers Association contract. And our city attorney gave his opinion, and our then-labor counsel did, and I'll have our current labor negotiations lawyer, Mr. McQueen, come down to confirm, if you agree with the rest of the lawyers, that you just don't look at the cash, the additional cash. That's an incomplete analysis. You must also look at the value quantified by the experts in what the value is in the reduction of the benefits. And while not equal in terms of exact mathematical equality, they are within 28.14% to about 32%, which is less, I believe, than what the police union gap is, which was deemed to be substantially equal. Now, do I believe there's additional work that can be achieved to progress towards mathematical equality? Amen. I absolutely agree with that. Our work is not done. We don't close the book, turn off the lights, and move on down the road. The contract that we've negotiated here ends by its own terms upon approval, December 31st of '14. That means this time next year, we're back at the table. We're negotiating again with this union. And the police contract expires before that, and we will begin meeting with them soon enough. And so, these issues are not resolved to mathematical equality, but within the terms of the charter, A, you just don't look at the money the city's paying in, or the firefighters are paying in, additional cash. You also have to quantify the value in dollars of what the benefits are that they're giving out. And we've had that done. And we've quantified the difference between 28.14% and 32%. And so, don't forget also, in terms of the difference, to look at this in terms of no historical perspective. Years ago, the union members, and I forget whether Mr. Calibro was a firefighter or a police officer, it doesn't matter, but there's been two lawsuits years ago that the courts of this state, after fierce battles on both sides, determined the city wasn't paying in enough, that you, city, have to pay in more. The taxpayers are on the hook, and I think the Calibro case was 4%. And I forget the percentage of the other case. So part of what you see here in this funding gap is a result of how you define versus how the lawyers and the courts and the experts define substantially equal versus the utopian goal of mathematical equality in light of decisions of the courts that have said, "City, you have to pay more." So there are laudable goals to keep closing that gap, and it's, and those are goals that we should each pursue. But to listen to critics, take snapshots in time of rates of return, to accuse the council of charter violations, to then mislead the public by saying the money's not there to pay for this stuff, to allege that the can is being kicked down the road, and to have some of the same people who voted for the agreement that dug us into the hole that we're in, lead the crusade of critics, is farcical. It's an absolute joke. But in the age of 24-hour news cycles, news bloggers and internet, press releases are immediately generated into reports and therefore somehow lend credibility that maybe they are factual. And unfortunately, with budgetary constraints that the news media have and the lack of resources that the reporters, like you've talked about, are not given, they don't have the time to even fact-check this stuff. But to have those who got us into this mess, lead the crusade, and in some cases say they didn't have the facts to make a decision, you know, folks, there's public records laws of these states that our media use all the time. And while you think and hope that your representative body is the appropriating arm of government would not have to resort to those things, at some point, if you don't have the facts you think you need to make a decision, shouldn't you step up the pressure to get the information you think you need? But to now to criticize this agreement as worse than '04 or '01 is lunacy. It's complete malarkey. This is substantial, meaningful reform, delivering on a mandate given to each one of us to produce reform in the pension and in the benefits that these particular employees of the city receive. Is there more work to be done? Yes. Our work is not finished. The cause carries on, and negotiations must continue, and we are capable of continuing the process. It's an evolution. But to listen oh-so patiently to the bunk that's been spewed... But to listen oh-so patiently to the bunk that's been spewed, notwithstanding the fact that it's mayoral and city council election time, I'm sorry if I've gotten the Irish red-cheeked moment here, but it is just preposterous to continue to listen to this garbage and have it reported as fact unchecked by those whose responsibility it is to report factually accurate information. There was even one point, one person reported the drop program. Remember, that's the program. The voters, constituents, taxpayers said, "Hey, can you figure out a way to keep people working longer?" And it's a process where they retire on Friday, their pension gets calculated, the money goes into an account, not the employee's account, not some account in the Cayman Islands or Switzerland. It stays in the pension fund, identified for that employee, and I haven't, you read in the paper that they effectively collect it and still work. And you tell them and you educate them, and no matter, you could say it till you're blue in the face, or in my case, till you're red in the face, and they don't care, they keep printing that stuff. And you occasionally hear from your constituent, "Why is it they can collect their pension and still work on Monday?" Where do you hear this stuff? Why read it in the paper? Therefore, it must be true. It's absolutely false. There is no interest return on that account paid to date that's been authorized by the pension board. Zero. Zip. None. Nada. They don't have the money, and yet it's still reported. And people say, "We've got to really look at this drop program to see if it's cost-neutral." Well, what more do you need to know? They can't collect the money. The pension board's rejected paying any interest on the money. The employees who are working don't get any more pension based upon it, but still have deducted from their payroll pension contributions as if they were. But you wouldn't know that from reading the paper. And so, the last thing I want to say is that I'd like to acknowledge the constituents of mine who were interested enough to come down to the meeting to testify. I believe two of them are in the professional capacity of representing organizations that, one of them is the Alliance, and the other is the Platt Institute. But other than those paid professionals and Mr. Bond, who came down on his own accord and ended up being neutral, unlike August of 2011, and unlike the police agreement the year before, in this case, there has been not one email and not one phone call, not one conversation in the Isle of Hivie, other than to point me in the right direction for some item I was searching for. Nowhere has there been the community expression or vocal opposition to this agreement. And to me, that is a powerful endorsement that this agreement, while not perfect, is palatable to the people who elected me and the people who elected each of you, that this is okay. And this agreement should be adopted, and we should end the union and labor strife and continue on as we move forward in the spirit of good faith dialogue with all of our employee unions to achieve the reforms that we so desperately need and agreements that are fair to them and fair to the taxpayers.
Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I think Councilman Jerem was just getting warmed up there.
I wouldn't know if Malachi was a little...
I have a few remarks. I am not a member of the police-fire pension system, but I am a member of the civilian pension system, appointed as a member of the city council to vet systems. So, I wanted to add one thing on that initial discussion about the investment rate of return, only to say this, that this is not our new issue. This council's been asking that question for three years now, and we're the first council to do that. Myself personally, with the city investment advisors, with our actuary and with our finance director, probably to the point where they're tired of me asking it. So, this wasn't something that just came up last week we hadn't thought about. And although all these professional advisors have stood by that assumption as recently as a couple of weeks ago, of course, we're asking them to continue to evaluate that system. Of course, they will do that on an annual basis. That's what you do when you evaluate a long-term investment and a major investment to be fiscally responsible. So, I'm confident they'll do that, and in fact, we've instructed them to do that. But none of that changes what we're really considering here today, and I think the main points, some of which have been made, include these. There is a good first step, and it achieves something that hasn't been achieved in five years under two mayors, and that's agreement on major public pension reform that saves taxpayers millions of dollars. This agreement does achieve the city council's main objectives of reducing pension benefits to pre-2002 levels, reducing healthcare benefits, ending spiking and raising the retirement age. It does save taxpayers $822 million over 50 years, an additional $2.1 million in wages and healthcare concessions, and $30 million right away once this is approved. I think it is notable to say, this has had strong bipartisan support on the council, and it will today, and it's had support from the Chamber of Commerce, the union itself, Taxpayers for Freedom, the Pension Reform Committee. That's a pretty unusual group of interest groups to all support a work product like this, and I think that tells us something, too. And I agree with Councilman Jerem, and it is notable that I haven't received a single email, call, or a comment in my neighborhood meetings of concern or of an opposition to this. In fact, quite the contrary. And I think we can count probably one hand, between the seven of us, how many points of concern we've gotten from our constituents, because I believe they understand it is a good first step, and they understand we aren't done. This goes through 2014, and we'll keep working. And frankly, I think they are pleased to see their government working together to address a major challenge, and hope that their federal government can do the same thing with their major challenges here in the next couple of weeks. And then lastly, I'd just note that I thought the Omaha World-Herald was correct in its analysis and when they endorsed this agreement a few weeks ago by saying, "It's the right direction, and it shows commitment to respectful and productive negotiation." Thanks.
Ms. Stafford.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to follow up just briefly on the issue of the rate of return that several of the opponents have been very critical of. Again, you are a member of the pension board. We talked about, established that before, but you provided me with a portion of a report that you received, being a member of the pension board, and it was called Performances and Benchmarks, and it was as of 9/32. And on this, that was provided by DeMarsh to the pension board, it does give an average of rate of return since inception, which was 1980, so that's 32 years ago, of an average rate of 9.4%. And that was provided to the pension board?
Yes, that is correct.
Was that debated on the pension board, or did anyone on the pension board disagree with that?
No, I mean, it was readily accepted.
Okay. And along with this same report, it gives a one-year average of 16.2%. It gives a year-to-date of 10.2%.
That is correct.
So, those are, that's information that you received from DeMarsh?
Yes, that is.
Okay. Now, I just wanted to read something because this is concerning to me. There was a press release released yesterday from someone who opposes this contract, and I just wanted to read you part of the press release. It said, "Advocates," which would be the city council, "for the contract tell us the rate of return on the pension investments over the past 30 years plus has averaged 9%. And according to the report you gave me, that would be accurate, right?"
Yes.
But then it goes on to say, "Newly released information from city finance director Pam Spaccarotella paints a far different picture of the rate of return of the pension fund. According to Spaccarotella, over the last 25 years, the plan's real rate of return was around 7%. And the last 20 years, actually, was 6.3%. Over the past 15 years, it drops even more." And then it goes on to give a couple more figures, and it says, "Frankly, what they," which is the city council, "are suggesting will happen defies the laws of financial physics." But at the same time, being on the pension board, you've confirmed that this information that they're saying defies the laws of financial physics, this came from DeMarsh and Associates, which is our investment advisors, and it was presented to the pension board?
Yes, that is correct.
And it was not argued at that time?
No.
Okay. Because this press release also says, "Some will say the 8% rate of return isn't the number the city council came up with, that it came from the pension board." To me, it's a convenient way to spin false assumptions, but at the same time, I just want to clarify that this was, these numbers were provided to the pension board by our investment advisors, and these were accepted by the pension board.
Yes. As a matter of fact, the, in my opinion, since I've been on the pension board, we've been very satisfied with the performance from DeMarsh and Associates.
All right. All right. And Mr. Jerem went through with that chart a while ago that I think was pretty telling about, in the past, what the expected rate of return was and what we have actually achieved. So, I think that that was quite telling. In fact, we received, just this afternoon, some additional information from DeMarsh that updates it as of today. So, I think the information that we have and that we have been providing to the public, those of us who have worked on these negotiations, and in my estimation, and obviously of yours, they have been very accurate, and not in any way, shape, or form trying to be misleading to anyone.
No. No, to the contrary. And as I stated earlier, I mean, and Mr. Festerson also stated, you know, we have both questioned repeatedly the 8% rate of return, and have gotten very acceptable answers from the investment community that does business for the pension funds, that this is, with the caveat that it is a long-term investment, you know, they're satisfied with the 8% rate of return goal.
And practically speaking, I mean, we can't guarantee that there will be an 8% return in the next 50 years, but we can't guarantee that it couldn't be, I mean, it may be higher. I mean, you just don't know, because you really don't have any other more accurate information than the historical average, and that's what they use. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
You take into consideration that there will be multiple investment cycles that will take place over a 40- to 50-year period.
Okay, thanks. And next, I wanted to ask Paul Kratz, city attorney, just a couple of questions, just to clarify.
Paul Kratz, city attorney.
There we go.
Mr. Weaver's pointing to me, and I don't know really what he means over there. Okay, just to go back to something Councilman Jerem asked you earlier, but I want to clarify about the substantially equal contributions from between the city and the union member, and he clarified it pretty well, that you not only have to consider the cash that the union members come in, but we have to consider the reduction in benefits. And when we add those up, they are, in your opinion, substantially equal.
That's true. Yeah, we've decided some time ago that we should consider the benefits that are given up. Obviously, did with the police contract. And while there might be three or four percentage points difference, in our opinion, that's close enough. The charter says substantially equal, so that gives you some leeway.
So, do you feel like in any way, shape, or form that this violates city charter?
No, I do not.
All right. And then one other area of the contract that has, recently, someone brought up this question, and it's been debated a bit in public, but there is a statement in Article 44, Section 1. And I'm going to read that Section 1, because, Mr. Kratz, I want to ask you your opinion of this. And it says, "In accordance with this article, the city has the discretion to establish the overall staffing, daily staffing, and staffing by rank for the Omaha Fire Department," which we all have been reemphasizing in the past couple of weeks, because that has been maintained in the contract. But it goes on to say, "In exercise of such discretion, however, the city shall adhere to general orders from the fire chief and/or executive orders from the mayor." Some have asked the question, "Does that statement mean that the mayor or the fire chief can change the terms and conditions of this labor agreement?" And what is the law department's opinion of that?
Now, if you look at the language, both refer to a fire chief's specific order from 2011 and also an executive order from the mayor in 2011. So, those are the orders that this particular paragraph's referring to. As I recall, those orders deal with response time, which then translates into the number of stations throughout the city, and might also deal with four in a unit, but that's taken care of anyway by the CIR. So, all this does is says that this contract will accept those two particular general orders from the mayor and from the fire chief. It doesn't indicate that those orders might be changed in the future.
So, I was told that this is referring to NFPA 1710, which is basically the operational manual that the fire department uses. It has everything from response times, et cetera.
That's correct.
So, what this is basically saying is that the fire chief or the mayor can make some decisions according to those, that operational manual, but can they change the terms and conditions of the contract?
No, they cannot.
They cannot? All right. I think that's all I have to say right now. Thank you very much.
Mr. Grenant.
Thank you, Mr. President. About 18 months ago, there was a contract before us, it was the mayor's contract that was negotiated with the Omaha firefighters. And up until that time, when it was presented to us, I can tell you that the constituents, at least in District 4, were following this somewhat closely. And that's when I said, I think, I'm not saying that I coined the phrase, but I used the phrase, "We need to get this marble in the bag." And when that contract came up before us, myself and my colleague to my left, Mr. Gray, we voted in favor of that contract. It was voted down at that time, and negotiations continued. And we all know that the council took over those negotiations, and here we are today. And the reason I activated the speak button, just as an update from the grassroots level in District 4, east of 72nd, south of Martha, I can tell you, I can count on one hand those that say this was wrong, and the other ones, either in English or Spanish, were telling me, "Get the marble in the bag!" So, we need, yes, as Mr. Jerem has stated today about our critics, even though folks in my district are telling, they understand that negotiations, contracts, and all of that are a work in progress. They never stop. Government goes on, and what's evident here today, if something happens, if the bottom falls out of the economy, various aspects of government are going to have to take some sort of immediate action. And that question was asked here today. And that question was asked here today and it was responded to today. And I think our constituents around the city, at least the majority of them, understand now, there's give and take in developments of contracts, whether it's for wages or whether it's for pothole material. This stuff constantly changes and we have to stay updated on it. So, yeah, it is a work in progress. So I'm going to support getting the marble in the bag today.
Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could have Mr. McQueen come up first.
Good afternoon, Mark McQueen. I work as an attorney with Barrett Home Law Firm, acted as the city's negotiator for these contract negotiations.
Thank you, Mark. I want to say thank you for the, the great job that you've done. You stepped into a hornet's nest and you really did a good job and you were able to push the contract beyond what the mayor's crew had given us. So, thank you. And I do have just a couple of clarifications, two clarifications. And I'll need the overhead, if you don't mind. If you could, Mark, if you could put this on the overhead for me.
Oh. Let's go have a light on.
This is just clarification. Would you do me a favor and read that statement?
You want me to read it?
Yes.
The parties further agree that wages established by the final order of the Nebraska Commission of Industrial Relations in case number 1251 will be paid for hours worked in 2011 and 2012 through June 23rd, 2012, retroactively based on individual calculations for each bargaining unit member employed during the applicable period to be completed within 90 days from the date of legal execution of this agreement.
What does that mean? And forgive me because I'm one of those people that you have to talk, you have to give it to me like I'm a sixth grader and that's my, that's my deficit, but I, I have to live with it. Just same way I live with ball hair, ball, no hair, ball head. I have to live with the fact that I, I need to have that in seventh grade language.
This contract calls for an 18-month wage freeze. The entire year of 2011 and half of the year of 2012. After half of the year of 2012, the contract provides for specific percentage wage increases. Now during the course of the negotiation of this contract, there have been multiple CIR decisions dictating what the wages should be. Most recently, in the first three months of 2012, the 2010 decision was handed down by the CIR, awarding specific wages. Now, in connection with the back pay that the city calculated as a result of those prior CIR decisions, the CIR, the, the city also withheld wages for 2012 pending the outcome of these negotiations. So essentially what this provision provides is that the wages previously ordered by the CIR will be updated to make them current with this contract. So what we'll have is, we'll have a merging of prior CIR decisions to get the firefighters current on the back pay owed to them pursuant to those CIR decisions with the newly negotiated wage increases called for in this contract.
So just one more stab at it. We are getting a pay freeze for 2011 and half of 12.
That's correct.
But this is doing what, just in a couple of words?
It's getting the firefighters current on the back pay ordered by the CIR pursuant to the 2010 CIR decision.
Okay, all right. And then I have one more that I need clarification on, if you don't mind. Would you do me a favor and read the blue and the orange?
The city's monetary contributions toward this unfunded actuarial liability shall not be considered pension contribution in any litigation before the Commission of Industrial Relations or used as a basis for comparison with member contributions for any purposes under the Nebraska Industrial Relations Act. The parties agree that this limitation is not intended in any way to waive the requirements and language of City of Omaha Charter, Section 6.09, and that neither party will advance such an argument in any dispute or litigation that should ever arise between the parties.
What did the city give up here?
This is language that was negotiated as part of the mayor's 2011 tentative agreement.
Good, bad or ugly, what, what did we give up?
I'm going to defer to, to the city attorney on, on the intent behind this language, in part because my instructions in bargaining this particular contract did not include this particular language. But what I believe this particular language-
We can have Bernard address it, if you don't mind.
Bernard.
Bernard in Nembosh, Assistant City Attorney. I think the concern that was being addressed here was if the parties at some point in the future went to the CIR and they introduced evidence of pension contributions, what the CIR historically has done is if the pension contributions, they compare them to other, they compare the gap to other cities. And if the gap is large, they'll reduce the wages of the employees by the percentage where that gap is larger than the average. So the thought here was this 11.75 was, or this money was intended to make the pension system whole. It was not intended to then be used by the city in some future litigation in the CIR to request a reduction, across-the-board reduction of wages below the comparability in subsequent CIR litigation.
And so, everybody's on board with that interpretation? Well, the interpretation's probably fine, but what about the results? Wouldn't some people in the administration want to hang on to this, right?
And this language was certainly negotiated by the, the mayor's council, negotiating team in the prior agreement. I think the, the feeling was this was a necessity in order to move forward with the contract because the firefighters were not willing to put themselves at risk where they would give up, instead of giving, putting additional contributions into the system, they would give up substantial amount of their benefits. And then the city would then turn around at some later point and use the fact that it put cash into the pension system to call, a call for a pretty significant, significant across-the-board pay cut below comparable cities.
But in comparable cities, there would be some people in those cities that would say that's a good thing the city should fight for?
Certainly, there are people who would say the fact that the city's putting in money, 11.95 percent of the contributions, is something we should get credit for. The quest, the concern was if you get credit for it, it does have an implication in the CIR.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen, both of you. And I'll take that back, if you don't mind. Thank you. That's okay. The most important thing for me is to, to both be real and genuine and authentic and to the end, and I'll, I'll be that even if it means that I take a big penalty. And I like to say that I have been part of the reason why my colleagues are wrestling with this. Back in 2004, we had four councilmen, a mayor, chief of staff and, and mayor's assistants, all voting and pushing for the fire contract. Within a half a year later, seven councilmen, the mayor, chief of staff and other assistants pushed for the passage of the police contract. On at least three or four occasions prior to today, I have owned up to that mistake. If I could take a time machine, I would go back into time and change that vote. I'd like to say that it's shocking to me that none of the other six-plus from 2004 or nine-plus from 2005 have joined me in stepping up and saying, "I'm part of the problem." I've been the only one out of that group that's ever publicly admitted it. And this council here has had to suffer because they were behind the eight ball as soon as they were elected. And so I'd like to say that if there is such a thing as a blame that's needed, and since the others have not stepped up, then I will go ahead and take 100 percent blame for my part and for the part of the other six-plus and the other nine-plus. I will go ahead and bear that even to the point that if that requires some kind of a penalty, then I will gladly and willingly accept what that penalty is. Now, having said that, I have on this council the longest history with this contract. And it has been like an 800-pound gorilla on my back. So whether or not my colleagues understand that my situation is slightly different than theirs, that's up to them. They're going to have to decide whether they give me that space or not. But one of the things that I definitely said to myself is that I'm going to have to be extra careful this time, extra careful. And so in taking that blame, I want to say that I am not blaming the staff, I am not blaming this council. This council had a tough decision to make. I am taking that blame 100 percent myself. And I failed. And to tell you the truth, most of my life, I have failed. And the winnings in my life have been very small, very short. Most of my life, I've been considered a failure. So it's not new territory for me, but I am learning and I am a good individual. I may not be the smartest person, but I am authentic and I am good. And what I want to do today is really take a look at where, where am I going with this? Where, where am I going with this contract? I will probably vote no. And my no vote in no way is a negative towards my colleagues. If I were in their shoes, maybe I'd have to make the same decision that they're going to make. This is tough. And there are, there has been some politicizing of this vote, and I haven't liked it. There have been some things that have been printed that I have went against and said, "This is not true, you shouldn't say those things." For example, just last night, someone tried to convince me that on page 118, 118F, that the fourth paragraph meant that pension people, once they, once we sign this contract, that they then can go back to the old pension formula. And I had to stop that person in their track and say, "You're just reading it wrong, you're reading it wrong." And so I want to say to my colleague to the right here, I too have noticed quite a bit of some of this wrangling going on and misrepresentation of what, the work that you've done. So I too do not like that kind of politics. And I think we have to stay on track with what's really important. But I will also say that this is an important vote for me. And my no vote has nothing to do with the individuals that I work with on a daily basis. It has everything to do with challenging the union. I, I mentioned back when we had the mayor's tentative agreement, that I have nothing against the mayor, nothing against my colleagues, nothing against the staff. It was me and the union. Go back, pull the tape and you'll hear that I said that. It's the same thing I'm saying now. I believe that the union in 2004 could have done better, and I believe right now, they could have been done, done better. I believe they could have made the job of this committee a little bit easier. So I'm going to take personal privilege and say even though this is a good product, it's one that I feel that could have been better, not because of what you didn't do, but because I feel that the union plays hardball a little too much. And so that's why I'm voting no, because I believe there are some things, one in particular, if you remember back with the mayor's tentative agreement, I asked, "Please put everyone on the civilian health care." In fact, I was willing to overlook a bunch of things that I didn't like. Give me that one and I'll say I compromise with you. They, they came halfway, but they didn't come all the way. And even today, right now, if I were to get that concession, I would vote yes. And so that's just one of a few things, but my history with this and my heart and the message that I want to send forward is that I'm expecting more from the union. And that's my reason for voting no. Good, bad, right or wrong, I'm going to stick with that, live and die with it. Thank you.
Mr. Gray?
I was not going to say very much because I was going to make a motion to approve this contract, and I will do that in a few minutes. But I want to say a couple of things first. And I want to say something directly to, to my colleague, Dr. Thompson. I, I don't put you down for whatever vote you do. I would, I, I'm hoping that you will reconsider. If you don't, that's okay with me. But the fact of the matter is, is that as we talked about these critics, one of the things that continues to irritate me somewhat is that one of our critics wants to engage in revisionist history. And what I mean by that is when, and I want to go back and say that the, this administration and this council, had we not done something early on, may not have had the opportunity to even negotiate a contract. But what happened was a month after we were on this coun, after we all took office, we recognized that there was language and code that needed to be fixed, that needed to be taken out of code so that we could even have the possibility of negotiating with the fire department. So a month in, I and Dr. Thompson introduced an ordinance to take that language out of code. It's not because we're anti-union or anything like that. As a matter of fact, I'll say for the record, I'm pro-collective bargaining and pro-union, and I think that, that we can coexist together. But to engage in revisionist history, the, the, the organization, the Alliance for the Private Sector wants to take credit for taking that language out of code, and they had nothing, nothing to do with that language, that language being out of code. They had nothing to do with it. If you go back and you look at the headlines in the newspaper, even though the paper was incorrect, it says Gray wants four men on a truck. That was, it was inaccurate, but the fact of the matter is, is they at least got the term right, that Gray wanted to do something. It had nothing to do with the Alliance for the Private Sector and my, my, my colleague, Dr. Thompson. While you say you made a mistake, the fact of the matter is, is that you got, you tried in the first month we were in office to correct that by addressing the fact that there was language and code that lead, that needed to be eliminated. We didn't pass it the first time, you took the lead, we passed it the second time. But at no time was anybody other than the members of this council involved in that effort. People want to make the argument that somehow this council and this male administration is somehow not doing what we should be doing or not addressing the issues the way, the way they need to be addressed. I would argue that this council and this administration has gone far and beyond a number of others that have been in, that have been in this position. And let's not engage in revisionist history. The reason that language is out of code was led by Dr. Thompson and myself, not some outside agency. Motion to approve the contract.
Could I respond just a little bit?
Mr. Thompson?
Is that okay? Mr. Gray, I wanted you to know that I too challenged that individual and told him that I didn't appreciate that, so you weren't the only one. I just want to set the record straight that- I just want to set the record straight that the minimum manning issue started in 2003 with me and another councilman, so I want to make sure that the other council person doesn't get short-changed. And when we finally did pass it, it was the fourth time around. So it was an event that was ongoing even before this council came on board. But like my grandmother said, when you make a mistake, be man enough, fess up to it, and then make a new decision to try to fix the mistake.
And that's what you do.
And so that's the best I can do, and this is heavy on my heart, and like I said before, I want to send a message forward across the bow that when '15 comes, we've got to really get down to some brass tacks. Thank you.
Mr. President, absent any comments that you may want to make, I call the question.
Ms. Stotther.
Thank you. Just to wrap up quickly, you know, today we are voting on the contract. This isn't about past confrontations or past disagreements or past arguments. This today is about the contract, the agreement that we have finally reached. And with that contract, we reached our goals, and we have an 18-month salary freeze, and we stopped spiking, and we increased the retirement age from 45 to 55 for new hires. And the current actives are putting more in, and they're working longer, and they're paying more for health care. If this contract was rejected, we would lose all of the gains. And to me, it's not worth losing all the gains to make a point. People in Omaha are saying, just like they are in the federal government, they're saying, "Stop the gridlock, come to a compromise, and get something done." And that's what we have done with this agreement. And so, yes, we would like to do more. Yes, the union knows we would like to do more, but we have worked, we have gotten a lot of concessions from the union. We are at a really good place with this contract right now, and as we said earlier, this time next year, we'll be back at the table to get more. Saying no to this gets you right back to court, costing the taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars, millions of dollars, doesn't do anything to fix the pension, and we would revert back to that contract of 2004 that we find to be most egregious. Thank you.
Just a couple of brief remarks, and we will move on. Number one, the only thing that I really disagree with that has been said here today is the fact that this is a good first step. I totally disagree with this. I think this is a major improvement. I think what this committee has been able to accomplish with this contract is astonishing. If Social Security were to announce today that the retirement age had just been increased by 10 years, people would be totally shocked, and that's exactly what we've done here today. We've taken retirement age from 45 to 55, which is a huge, major change that is going to create financial benefits to the city of Omaha, in addition to the fact that the maximum pension is going to be reduced from 75% down to 65%. Those are major changes, and the negotiating committee really needs to be applauded for being able to get those types of improvements to this pension plan. So I applaud you. I mean, to me, this is nothing minor. These are major, major changes that have not been able to have been accomplished to date. And lastly, I want to say this. A year ago, when the decision was made by this body to take over labor negotiations, the very first thing that needed to be done was the fact that we established a labor negotiations committee. And as president of the council, I have the honor and the privilege to pick our committee assignments. And I asked Jean Stotther to lead this effort, and without hesitation, Jean stepped up to the plate. And Jean, you've done an absolutely wonderful job providing leadership to this committee and for the city of Omaha to take these negotiations to where we are at today. In addition, Mr. Festerson and Mr. Jaram both agreed to sit on the committee. Make no mistake, this has required a major amount of work on these three individuals' parts, and we are getting ready here to declare victory, and I thank all three of you. This has been a very major accomplishment for the city of Omaha, one that has not been able to take place until today. And to Mr. Thompson, frankly, I understand your comments, and I don't think it's necessary for anybody to apologize for a decision that you made in the past. We all make decisions based upon the information that we have at that time, but I do ask today that you stand with us and be counted and to make this new agreement a part of the city of Omaha's new contract with the firefighters. And with that... A big part of life is just knowing to say when, so I'm going to say when. Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Stottherd.
Yes.
Thompson.
Based on the fact that I thought that the union could do more and that they held my colleagues hostage, I'll say no.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's past 6:1. You need to read that statement of public hearing.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 31 through 40 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. Public hearing is closed. I was so worked up. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks. We discussed item number 40 in pre-council a little bit. I think Mr. Gray also wants to say just a couple of things about it. It's fine that it stays on consentogenic because that's where it should be, in my opinion, but I just wanted to reaffirm that what this item does is that it provides city assistance to what Building Bright Futures is doing, in our high schools primarily, to help address the issue of truancy and expanding that program actually this year into additional high schools. It's been a very important part of the overall picture of addressing crime and keeping our kids in school, keeping our kids safe. So I wanted to note that this item, the $300,000 today, is consistent with the city council's budget amendment that was submitted during this last cycle to keep this program whole because it wasn't whole at the time, and continue it into next year, and I look forward to support it today. I know Mr. Gray wants to say a few things, too.
Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to be very brief. I've got some statistical data that reflects what Building Bright Futures has been doing with the buildings that they are currently in, and I believe there are about six of them. And in each of those instances, there have been double-digit decreases in the number of individuals that were consistently truant, who are currently in school today. In some instances, those numbers approach nearly 30%. And so this has been a good investment for this council, and it's one that I'm glad to support. But I want to go back just very briefly to the opening comments by my colleague on the left, council member Jaram. You know, as we look at the concerns of violence and people who have challenges, you know, as we get people back to school, we need to recognize also that there are issues of mental illness and behavioral issues that need to be addressed. And as we are getting people back to school, we need to be cognizant of those things as well. But this is one of the best investments, one of the better investments that this city has made, and the results have been no less than astonishing for the amount of time that it's been in existence. Thank you, Mr. President.
Well said. Mr. Gernat.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a group of students here earlier, and unfortunately, they probably had to catch the bus and get back to school. Question for the finance director. The $300,000 is coming out of the Keno Lottery Fund. Is that accurate?
Pam Spacker, tell the finance director that it's correct.
And those funds are supposed to be used for community betterment, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And I think this certainly falls within that category. Thank you very much.
Roll call.
This is on items 31 through 40. Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Stottherd.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
They're all adopted 7 to 0. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7-H, the third reading of public hearing on agenda items number 41 through 43 shall be held on January 8. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7-H, the third reading on agenda items number 44 through 48 shall be held on January 8. Public hearing on these items are today. Item 44, ordinance writing for the transfer of a permanent right-of-way easement to the Omaha Public Power District running roughly parallel of Pippel Park with rights of ingress and egress thereto.
Public hearing on agenda item number 44 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 45, ordinance to prove an agreement with Kansas City, a series of lock-in companies that provide broker services to the city of Omaha for one year with an option to extend for additional years.
Public hearing on agenda item number 45 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Alan Herrick, City Finance Department. We request your favorable consideration on this item, and we have a couple of representatives from the company right here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gray.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'm going to be very brief because I made the same comments this morning, and I will make them this afternoon as well. I'll be supporting this when it comes up next week, but I would want us to take a look at future-year contracts, and this was a golden opportunity, I think, that was missed to include small and emerging businesses on the professional side of the contracts that we let. So I encourage the department heads and all of us to be cognizant of the fact that we have a very robust, small, emerging business program, and we should take every opportunity that we can to make sure that small, emerging businesses are included. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Clerk.
Agenda item number 46, ordinance to amend section 1544 to allow a retail liquor licensee 60 days to file an application for approval of a new manager.
Public hearing on agenda item number 46 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 47, ordinance to amend, you want us to quote 48112 and add a new article to chapter 18 entitled "Solid Waste Containers," to move the existing regulations regarding solid waste containers from chapter 48 to chapter 18.
Public hearing on agenda item number 47 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 48, special ordinance approving the Omaha Downtown Improvement District Association 2013-14 work plan and budget, and to levy a special tax and assessment on lots and pieces of real estate within the Business Improvement District number 6874 in the city of Omaha.
Public hearing on agenda item number 48 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Joe Gudenrath, Downtown Improvement District, 1620 Dodge Street. Here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
After hours dance permit. Item number 49, resolution, the application of Omaha Mining Company for the issuance of after-hours dance permit at 1715 Leavenworth Street. Being hereby is approved.
Public hearing on agenda item number 49 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Stottherd.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted 7 to 0. Item number 50, resolution, the application of 10th and Capital Incorporated for the issuance of after-hours dance permit at 1011 Capital Avenue. Being hereby is approved.
Public hearing on agenda item number 50 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Sean Kelly, 7134 Pacific Street, appearing on behalf of... Can be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Stottherd.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
And Jaram passes the second time for a potential conflict of interest. Is adopted 601. Pass. Voto, voto.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Pursuant to City Council Rule 7-H, the second reading of public hearing on agenda items number 51 through 53 shall be held on January 8. Additional resolutions will take up items 55 through 62 altogether. They're all appointments to the Blackstone Business Improvement Board. 55 is a resolution to appoint Dwayne Brown, 56 is James Faro, 57 is Donald Futrell, 58 is Dan Goodse, 59 is Dan Houlihan, 60 is Bradley Iowan, 61 is Jay Lund, and 62 is Rhonda Stutberg, all to be confirmed by the city council.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers 55 through 62 are today. Are there any proponents?
Hi, Dan Houlihan, 3926 Farnham.
Thank you, sir.
Dwayne Brown, 3624 Farnham.
Donald Futrell, representing Nebraska Medical Center.
Jay Lund, representing the owners of 3928 Farnham.
Dan Godsey, 3920 Farnham Street.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jaram.
Yes, I just want to first recognize that we have a bunch of people here who have been working quite hard now for a few years in trying to get this important business node that has so much potential revitalized. The primary instigator of this whole mess is under the weather, I believe, today, Brad Iowan, who is one of the nominees. And then also point out, it is a diverse group, but Rhonda couldn't make it here today. And as well, we have neighborhood association support through former Blackstone neighborhood president, Jim Faro. So I thought it important to point out to the community that there are community builders. They come from all backgrounds, perspectives, and they share one common goal, that they believe this area of 36th to 42nd on Farnham is worthy of investing substantial time, effort, investment to improve it and to bring it back to the way it once was in the thriving business district. And you're looking at five of the people who have been working so hard, but they've been having large group meetings with all the property owners, several of them, and their continued dedication to include them in the process and shaping what this group will look like with the help of the planning department, who's participated, the Chamber of Commerce, who's participated, the law department, who's made their attorney Bernard Indabash available, through the other business improvement districts in the city who've lent their time and knowledge and experience to this process, to the businesses in the area, like the Castle Barrett that's opened up their large meeting hall for meetings, as well as the Neighborhood Association and its members have embraced this. So I'm excited for you. It's an important step in the process, and want to thank you on behalf of all the people in the area as their representative, and I'm sure as my colleagues do, for what you're trying to do to improve your area of the city. So, thank you.
Mr. Festerson.
Thanks. Just a word of encouragement to commend Councilman Jaram for initiating this process with Blackstone. It is a great part of town and a great business district, and we've established business improvement districts in Dundee and Benson now, and they're up and operating, and you're going to find this is a heck of a lot of work, trying to come up with the consensus you need to move forward and your program of work every year. Once you get to that point, you're also going to find it very rewarding, and it's going to produce some concrete results for you. So I'm glad to see all of you step up and also help move the ball forward, and I know it'll be great for that part of town, and I definitely support what you're doing.
Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Stottherd.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
They're all adopted 7 to 0.
Roll call.
Gernat. Gray. Jaram. Stottherd.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.